Let's uh. Let's kick this off with a call to order.
Richard Gertek.
Here.
Jennifer Smith.
Here.
Archie Morgan.
Here.
Patrick Fur.
Here.
Margaret Desio.
Here.
Kenneth Field.
Here.
Fabulous. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Amen.
All right, moving on to approval of the minutes for December 6. Who checked us for commas and periods and semicolons?
I only have one amendment to that, to the minutes.
Okay.
And it uh. Let me find it here. It basically involves a um. A reply that I made to a question. That the microphone picked up, but the question wasn't picked up. And Archie posed the question, so either just put in Archie Morgan asked unintelligible, or if he remembers what he asked.
Are you kidding me?
Do you know which page that was?
Yeah, I'll find it here in a minute. I reviewed it online. I should have wrote it on here, so. It is on page thirteen. And the the response is correct. It's just the question that Mr. Morgan asked is missing. So I don't know if he remembers what he asked or not.
Where you say I've, you I want to know where this board was last month? That's my thoughts? I don't remember.
Okay. I think what you what it was is you leaned over to me and and asked me what I thought about the project.
Okay.
And I was, and my response was, I'm still trying to figure out where this board was last month when Eagles rest came up.
Okay.
So, but I don't want to say what you said, so.
Okay.
Other than that, I found it to be complete.
All right, so Terry, do we just put a a cue with above, a cue above Ken Deal on page thirteen? It'll be a question and it will say Archie Morgan unknown. Unintelligible. All right, Ashlyn, got that?
Sums me up pretty good.
Mr. Deal, you good with that?
Yep, other than that, it was good.
All right, then I need a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
So moved.
I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on our minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Moving on to item four. This is going to be a zoning map amendment uh for property located at eight zero seven and eight zero nine West Franklin Street. Patrick, how are you?
Hey, doing good.
We had a meeting, Patrick, that we were all, we've all got a list of questions that we've planned just for you because we knew you were going to be doing this.
Thank you. All right, well, good evening, planning board. I'm Patrick Blazek. I'm here to bring forth to all the rezoning math request for eight oh seven and eight oh nine West Franklin Street.
Oh, Patrick, could you either talk into the microphone a little loud?
Sure.
I just can't hear you.
Okay, is that better?
Much better.
Okay, yes. So rezoning request for eight oh seven and eight oh nine West Franklin Street. Uh the subject parcel can be seen here on the screen outlined in blue. Um the lot size is point three four eight acres. The rezoning request is to rezone the property from its current zoning district of RMD, residential medium density, to RHD, residential high density. The residential high density zoning district is a district in which it allows for a greater diversity of development, which includes multifamily.
Carrie's doing that to you, just so you know.
And the lot is located in the City of Monroe Historic District. And um the reason why the applicant is looking to rezone the property is so they can convert the existing property and existing structure from its current form as a duplex into condominiums. Moving on to attachment two and some of the area characteristics, the subject property again, which is outlined in blue, and all of these surrounding parcels in the adjacent area are all zoned RMD or residential medium density. And attachment three, again, the subject property outlined in blue, um and all the surrounding parcels that can be seen on the screen here all fall under the traditional development character area of the future land use and transportation plan. And planning staff believes that the request is consistent with the land use and transportation plan due to the fact that multifamily is a priority use and allows for up to ten units per acre. In this specific instance, it would allow for up to five point seven five units per acre. A rezoning notification sign will be placed ten days prior to the public hearing and a mail notification of the public hearing will be sent out ten days prior and to all properties that are within one hundred fifty feet of the subject property. And planning staff does recommend approval of this rezoning request. Do you have any questions for me? The applicant is also here as well. If you have any questions for him in specific.
All right, do we have any questions for Patrick?
Not at this time. I don't, I will. I've got a variety of questions, but let's hear from the applicant first.
From the applicant.
Okay, we'd like to hear from the applicant. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this project?
You have anything on the air?
That's a good idea.
Have any specific pictures or anything?
All right.
I don't have any pictures.
Okay, all this, leave this to the full screen.
Thanks, Patrick.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, planning board. Appreciate it.
Tell us who you are and raise the microphone up a little bit to you. There you go. Thank you.
My name, my name is Evan Abramowitz. I'm the property owner. I'm the owner of Conestell LLC. And I appreciate you hearing this matter, planning board. What what we're trying to do, we're not going to make any changes. It's going to be existing. We're keeping the existing building. All we want to do, right now it's operated as rentals. All we want to do is make it owner occupied housing. Okay? We were told that this was the process we had to go through to do that. We're not, again, not changing, not building any new buildings, not part, splitting the lot, not tearing down the buildings, just simply changing from for rent to for sale. And a little bit about me, so I I bought the property with my wife in twenty twenty-two. We kind of, I grew up in Charlotte. I went to Myers Park High School. I kind of knew about Monroe's potential. I was attracted to it as a market and invest. The first time I kind of drove around Historic District, I was like honestly blown away by how like beautiful it was and charming. I was like this, and I saw the property on the market. I was like, this seems like a great, really like the potential of this area. So it's been good. We uh we live in, currently live in Wilmington. Um we moved to the Historic District, really like historic buildings, historic neighborhoods. And what we've seen in Wilmington is just there's a lot of strong community investment there. And I feel like you get that with, you know, owner occupied housing as opposed to rentals, people that are invested and in the community. And that's in addition to, you know, as an investor, I feel like this is the best move. I also feel like it's good for the city as well to have owner occupied housing in this in this spot. So again, that's why I'm here and thank you for considering. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right, Archie?
Um, well, we take the Historic District, uh you know, very seriously. I'm chairman of that Historic District Commission. I'm concerned about, there's no elevations here. We have no idea what this, what you're wanting to do, what it's going to look like. You know, our job is to preserve the Historic District.
Right.
I don't know what you're planning here.
So we're not planning anything. We're not making any changes to the building. We're just literally gonna, our, so our plan is that we're going to sell, we're going to put the property up for sale as for for sale units, basically.
Will the outside of of the house change in any way?
No changes.
Won't look any different?
No changes inside or outside.
How many condos are we talking about?
It's two. It's a duplex, so just two units.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they're going to be sold individually?
Correct.
Now, my question is, if if this went through, what what if that, or you sold it to somebody else and God forbid the property burned to the ground or or they tore it down, what would they be able to put back there? The the same thing or quadruplex or?
Probably probably better question, Patrick.
If the property were to, I'm speaking to the mic, so Ashlyn can get this, but if the property were to burn down after this rezoning, if the parcel would become RHD, residential high density, so they'd be able to put, you know, multifamily on, and like such as, you know, condominiums and multifamily products on the lot. But whatever they would put on the lot would have to go through the Historic District to make sure.
Therein, therein lies the rub. You know, the zoning goes with the the property, not not the home. So we're concerned about down the road, what happens to this property? What what is the potential that could go on that piece of property?
So anything that is allowed in the RHD zoning district, so you could have, you know, condominiums or different types of multifamily.
What, how many? How many on that lot?
How many? Like a quadruplex is what I was saying.
So they could have on the lot, I believe it's three, three units that they could have on the lot.
That lot's not that big.
To go from two units to three units?
Yes.
Which is a, it's what, a third?
Can I just add something as well? If it were to burn down and say be rebuilt, um Patrick did say three units max um based off of the density of the RHD. In addition to that, they would have to meet all of the development standards such as buffering and landscaping and open space. So while they could probably technically do three, I don't know if it's really feasible with all of the requirements that the ordinance would require as far as open space and landscaping to go that route if it were to burn down.
I'm just, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Could somebody come in and buy that property and then do the mall as rentals?
Well, certainly, certainly. I mean, just like it's rental now today, the city can't regulate rental versus home or owner occupied.
If it's two units now and it's going to stay two units, why do we have to rezon it to high density?
Because the owner is looking to do condominiums, which are only allowed in the RHD, residential high density zoning district. Condominiums are not allowed in the current district where it's in, which is the RMD or residential medium density district.
That's because he wants to sell them individually, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
All right. We have more questions for Evan? All right, Evan, thank you. Is there anybody that would like to?
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this project?
Good evening. I'm James Carr, speaking to you as a neighbor and Historic District resident. And as you can see, for those of you who know us, the property in question is directly across the street from our house and also directly in front of another property that we own on the corner. We worked really hard to get this part of the downtown area in the Historic District. And we we love seeing what's happening up and down every street downtown. And having this property, condo or townhouse, what would the difference be if it were townhouses? Would we be having the same discussion? Meaning that they own, meaning that they would own the dirt under the two units?
Yeah, that's the, that's the difference, obviously, between the townhomes and the condominiums. Um townhomes, you would own, it would be a property line from the front to the back. Um and each person would own a lot plus part of the building. Whereas a condo, it's basically an internal property line where the exterior is maintain, or owned by both parties, basically. Um townhomes are permitted in the RMD district. Condos are considered multifamily, which is why the RHD is required for the rezoning. Is that?
That clear if I was that?
Okay.
So would you be good if it were townhouses?
I don't know if that's going to be allowed because of the density. I think that's why we're at where we're at.
Well, whether it is two condos or two townhouses, it would increase property values exponentially. I see that that house is truly a jewel. It's a Sears Roebuck house. You know what I'm talking about? It was truly delivered to that site in nineteen twenty, whatever, from the railroad yard and put together, and it has always been a duplex. It was ordered as a duplex. It was assembled as a duplex. And each side has twenty-one, twenty?
Twenty-two, eighty-five, twenty-seven.
Almost three thousand, almost twenty-three hundred square feet on each side, each apartment, which would be a condo or a townhouse. And having these to purchase, I mean, we all know the advantages. Whenever you've got someone that's just more stable, you have people that are staying longer, the yards are kept up better, all the things that that we all know. So I think this would help strengthen the fabric of our neighborhood. You know, God forbid something happened that would burn down, but um I think you were pretty clear, both of you, that you could never do more than three. I don't see how you could but three units on that. It's really skinny. I don't know if you've actually walked that property.
Where's the parking in the back of that, James? Is it at the at the very rear?
Mm-hmm. When you, if you go past our house and take a left on Johnson, and then you take another left, there's a driveway right behind the building that currently runs right into a two car garage. And the garage appears to be original, too. There you, there you go. See, it's it's that hip roof structure that's actually behind the eight oh seven side. And just look at how cool that is. Look at the pyramidal design of that roof. And it's already divided in the middle. Who was it that looked at it? Uh Brian. Um McAllister's already looked at it. It already has the demising walls and the attic and the firewalls. The firewall's already there. So this would truly be just a legal maneuver. You're not making any changes inside. You're not making any changes outside.
Well, it's always been well maintained.
Always.
Those loans, I've lived here thirty-six years and I've never seen it in any kind of disrepair, ever.
The prices, Bill and Nancy Price owned it, I think, for fifty years and then Evan and his wife have owned it.
Is it going to have like a homeowners association or anything like that?
If it's condo, it would. If it's a townhouse, it would not.
Evan, why don't you come back up? So we're asking James questions that should be directed to you.
Sorry, James.
I might direct him to James here because he's.
That's okay. That's fine, but.
I'll stand over here.
Sure. I'll answer if I know, but we might refer to the experts over here. What was the question? I'm sorry.
Homeowners Association, connected with it.
If it's a condo, it would have to have an HOA just for two units. And it would be just like where our son just bought in Mount Pleasant. You're dividing, you have a undivided interest in all of the property outside of your inside walls. So you'd be probably paying one person to mow and one person to clean out the gutters and one person to paint the trim, et cetera, et cetera.
So these are strictly going to be for sale?
Correct.
There's no way that they can be rentals?
Well, no, like if somebody could buy something and rent it, yeah, you can do anything you want to with it.
Yeah.
There ain't anything that you can include in the deed or anything else that excludes that.
Somebody just bought that whole neighborhood near McGee Corporation. That whole neighborhood's rental now on seventy-four.
Or could I ask a gentleman's agreement between you and me at least? That you would pledge never to sell this property to a corporate rental company?
What did you say, Ken? I'm sorry to hear that.
I ask him for a gentleman's promise that he would never sell it to one of those corporate rental companies that destroy properties.
Yeah, like a out of state, like, yeah, I know what you're talking, like.
Out of state, in state, I don't care where they're at. I'd like to see two single families go into this thing.
Sure.
And own what they're living in.
Right.
Because they'll maintain it to this level of maintenance. Nancy Price was my neighbor before she passed away, so I I've been in this house.
Yeah.
One side is is beautiful, actually. But I I can't require that. Obviously, nobody can require that. But I'd like to know that a couple of families are going to benefit from what you're trying to do.
That's the hope, yeah.
Corporate rental company.
Yeah.
I think you have pretty strict scrutiny. The ladies next door are there, our neighborhood watch, Lorraine and Gina, if you know them. And then Griffins are diagonally across the street. We're the two houses directly across and.
You wouldn't let that happen, would you, James?
No, and certainly Dana wouldn't.
Okay.
We don't want Dana upset about anything.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh do we have anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this project?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would we have anybody that would like to speak against this project? Okay. Hearing none. Do we have any further discussion on the board? Any more questions for Patrick?
I would like to say that I would like to see some of this work before we go forward with this. In other words, if he's done this somewhere else, I'd like to put my eyes on this work. See what he intends to do because basically we're giving a pig and a poke and hoping he does this and hoping he does that. I can't see a lot of advantage to the city or the community if we're just going to take the thing and turn it into two homes and double our asking price on the thing. So if there was any way possible, I'd like to see some of this work where this has been done before, before we make a decision on this.
Evan, have you done anything like this before or is this your first outing?
Uh I haven't done anything like this before, but like I said, I'm not doing anything at all with the building.
Right. The building stays the same. You just want to be able to deed it left and right.
Exactly.
Okay.
My concern is he says he's not going to do anything to it. Well, what do we, what kind of work are we looking for?
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's. Inside work, see what is going to outfit it, if it's going to outfit.
I don't think he's going to.
There's, from what he's saying.
Control over that. We don't have any control over that.
From what he's saying, there's nothing to see. I mean, I, like Margaret said, I don't know what we'd look at. He's not changing anything. I'm concerned about elevations too, but there won't be any, any change from what he's telling us.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to recommend the adoption of the revolution approving the land use and transportation compliance.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'm thinking on it.
I'll second your motion. Do we have any further discussion while everybody's thinking about it now that we have a first and a second? So I have a first and a second. All in favor of approving as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All who disagree with this approval, say nay.
Nay.
Were you an aye or a nay? I didn't hear you, sir.
I didn't vote.
You're not voting?
Not voting.
Can I have anybody that would like to abstain from this project? Please abstain. Thank you, sir. Okay, so we have.
Do you abstain? Terry?
I was going to ask.
Yeah, to abstain, there needs to be a basis. To abstain, either you have some conflict or some interest in the property would be a basis for abstaining. Otherwise, it's counted as a yes vote.
That's correct. I'm aware of that.
All right, so this motion, that motion approves or is approved. I need another motion then recommending the adoption of the ordinance?
Can I make a motion to recommend the adoption of the ordinance amending section one five seven dot one dot two dot one dot?
I have a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the approval of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? All right, this this motion is approved and we'll go to city council as an approved motion from planning. Congratulations. All right, moving on to item number five. This is going to be a zoning text amendment to section three, spot three, spot four and three, spot three, spot four titled Board of Adjustments and Planning Board.
Good evening, planning board. Mr. Chairman, um there's been a request to add two alternates to both the planning board and the board of adjustment. Um the reason for that is that often there are vacancies or missing, absent people and alternates would then be able to fill in and take the place of those members and and participate. Um but that's a request that we've had. Because this is in the UDO, it's a UDO ordinance, um it has to come before the planning board for your consideration and make a recommendation before it can go to city council. So I put a copy of the ordinance, proposed ordinance, up there for you to take a look at. And I'll point out in the board of adjustment ordinance, um there's also a suggestion that we designate a minimum of three members, a minimum of three, a maximum of seven plus two alternates. And the reason for that is the board of adjustment only has three members now. So there's some concern about whether we have sufficient numbers to be able to operate with the board of adjustment the way they are. So that would, that would eliminate this problem, or at least eliminate, alleviate this problem. Hopefully, we can add some more members to the board of adjustment because they're critically needed. But uh but at least it would allow my ordinance that we could operate with three members rather than seven. Again, this is for your consideration before it goes to city council and.
Kay, I have a question.
Sure.
Is it possible to break these up into two? Because right now they're they're kind of gang together.
That's correct.
So I would be in favor of what you're saying for board of adjustments.
Okay.
But that being said, you know, I just got this. I'd like some time to think about it. I'd like some time to to ask some other folks some questions about it. How, you know, how many, if we're going to do alternates, does that mean we're going to have, how many alternates per board of adjustments, per planning? And then how to, I'm sorry?
Two each.
Two each?
Two alternates for planning board and two two alternates for board of adjustment.
Now, will they be coming to every meeting or will they just be coming when we need them?
They will be coming with the idea that if something happened, they would be able to fill in and replace a regular member if they were needed during a hearing.
Okay. Will we be paying them to sit in the stands versus sitting on the dais?
Yes, there will be a paid participant.
That's a pretty good gig.
I've I've done that before. That that that's been in the past.
For many, many years, we had alternates on both boards. And I think, and I'm not sure where it got removed, but.
Well, I know more history about that than I care to know, so I won't repeat the history. But I've heard many times that the city council would prefer not, for us not to send things forward to them with no recommendation. And the only way to ensure that is to have a full board here every every meeting, seven votes. So it's either an up or down recommendation from the planning board.
Correct.
And the, we we've had this problem, not so much with the planning board, but with the board of adjustment because we lost alternates. And when we lost alternates, we lost the ability to pull and and we also lost public interest in even being on the board. And when they, when they did away with the alternates, I was one of the first people to complain about that. It just made no sense not to always have a full board sitting up here adjudicating.
Right.
Where we can have alternates, they receive the same packet that we do, they do their own individual research that that we do, and they come and they sit here and they're ready to step up as a full up round because they attend every meeting. And we we always, if 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 Coach is on vacation or our chairman's on vacation, whatever, doesn't matter. We've still got seven people voting on stuff and we don't have the Wild Woods that we dump on the city council with no recommendation from the planning board. Kind of negates the purpose of us even being. So I'm fully supportive of this. I do have one question, though.
Sure.
I didn't have a chance to read GS one six zero D dash three oh seven as to how it pertains to the ETJ member on these two boards. The revision takes them out where the ETJ member by that state statute is appointed by Union County. I think that little portion needs to be put in there. We've never had anybody from the junior council show up at either one of the meetings.
Right.
So I don't see a problem with taking that away.
Yeah, no, and and the intent here is not to take away the ETJ members. They would still remain. They may not have been part of this revision.
Right.
But in the overall ordinance, they would still remain unchanged.
Can we just put that sentence back in there?
Um it's, I think it's in another section of the ordinance.
Ken, do you want to table this until they can fix that and bring it back to us next month?
No, I don't see any reason to table it. I don't see any reason to table it.
Yeah, but it's again.
It's a simple change.
The intent was to leave all the rest of the ordinance except for this specific change unchanged. So the remainder of the ordinance would be, remain intact, the ETJ portions and those kinds of things. Because there are lots of other provisions in this ordinance just besides just these, and they would all remain intact and the same.
I just want to make sure that the people that live in the ETJ don't find themselves unrepresented
Right.
in matters that directly affect them. That's, that's my, my point, so.
And I'm almost a hundred percent positive that will remain in place.
Now, we've always had seven. We're just actually adding alternates on, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
We're putting them back on. They used to be on there before.
Well, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for, any other questions for Terry? Mr. Scholler, Dr. Scholler, as the case may be?
We don't call ourselves doctors.
Well, you got a juris doctorate, man. I mean, you know, you could. That's even better than a PhD.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing no further questions, any discussion from the board? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
All right, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Seconds, okay.
I have a second.
Two seconds.
I got double seconds over here, double mint gum. And any further discussion with a first and a second? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Let's move on to item number six. Our next meeting will be February the seventh. If anybody's got any conflicts with that, please let Ashlyn know. All right. Carrie, you got anything else for us? Do you know when we're going to get a Krispy Kreme? I mean, Doug's not here, so.
Falls to you, Krispy Kreme.
Can you work on that? Can you work on that? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item seven, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, folks.